We're all set.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. This is the 28 April meeting of the Finance Committee. We have an agenda tonight that is previous or a prelude to our pre-town meeting, which I hope to start promptly at 7 o'clock. So without much prelude, I want to get into it and I'm going to turn it right over to Mr. McKay for a DPW Reserve Fund transfer request. And I see that Jim's on, so Jim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, we're asking for a reserve fund transfer. I'll give you a little background. This is the intersection of Pleasant Street and Route 109. The control panel that operates the streetlights, not the, when I say the streetlights, the red, green, yellow lights, traffic lights. In early November, it burnt out and we had the company come in and they did, they welded the pieces together to keep it operating and they recommended that we had to buy a whole brand new control panel because the box was over 15 years old. If you look at the reserve fund transfer, we're looking for $12,189. There's a, the bill is 17,024, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, it's 17,108, $17,189. $5,000 of that was for the octagon system that were, when I was on the planning board, we asked the gas station to 10, the person that bought the gas station, it was one of the only streetlights that was left that did not have this octagon system. And what an octagon system is, it's when the fire truck, police cruisers, when they go towards that, there's a device in the vehicles that actually turn on the lights and they make the traffic flow with the way the cruiser or ambulance or fire truck goes. So that, we're taking $5,000 out of the gift fund because that's already paid and that's lowering the price down to that $12,189. This was voted on by the select board. The contract was approved by them. I think I gave a copy of that meeting minutes of that. You have a price for the quote for all the work that was done and a copy of the warrant.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Real quick, I did review this cursory review and you did answer a couple of my questions. But I do have a question as to, because we are, I, Lisa, several of us have been sticklers as to reserve fund requests. So help me understand how the timing dictates that this come out of a reserve fund if something was voted on back in November and here we are.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry. Do you want to go ahead, Jim?
Yeah, so I could briefly explain that. I mean, it took that long to build the control panel. It's not something that easy. And then we waited till, that's when, and they install it right away. And if you look at the budget, the street lighting budget right now, there's 4,000, 425 in repair signals, which would pay for it. And then street lighting, which we still have to pay for the lights, all the lights that are on, is 11,000. So total, when the report was ran back on the 15th, there's $16,457.58 in the street lighting expense budget. But to take this out of there, we would have had to come back and ask a reserve fund to pay for any other repairs, which have already had repairs since this was filed and the remaining two or three months of street lighting, you know. When I say street lighting, there are the ornamental lights throughout the town. They're all the, we don't, Eversewes doesn't own anymore of the streetlights on the poles, the town owns them. So we have to maintain and repair them and pay for that cost. And it also pays for all the traffic lights and anything else that, you know.
Okay. You've answered my question sufficiently. Thank you. And any questions from the board or the committee, excuse me?
Mr. Chair, Kathy McInnes, if I may?
Yes, please.
Can I, can, through the chair, can you confirm what the, what was in the street lighting budget? Was it 4,000, 425? Mr. Gazinski?
Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's what I believe is the amount. I don't have the separate updated spreadsheet in front of me, but that was the amount when we filled out this form. So I believe that is the amount.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, I might, we're down the road and perhaps might be a good time to bring this up. We seem to be, the DPW seems to be giving 16,000 plus from its budget for some sort of shortfall within, I think, the fire department. So why are we taking money that could have been used for this from the DPW fund rather than to meet the obligation of whatever the fire department needed the money for? That could have been some sort of reserve fund emergency. Again, I'm here a year. Educate me, please. Thank you.
I think, I think you're asking about, we had an interdepartmental, departmental transfer recently, Kathy?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Mike or Carol or Jim, do you care to comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I mean, that is certainly a legitimate question. I think when we get to the end of the year, we have to make a lot of movements and changes within budgets. And I think, as I mentioned, at a recent meeting, I think we're going to have to keep an eye on these budgets during the months of May and June. We are running tight this year on the end of year budgets. I'm confident we'll be covering everything, but at the same time, I understand that in some ways, it does appear we're shifting money, one way to simply move it again later. And we have to, we had to set up the transfers several weeks ago. And we do believe that this is the best way to go at this point. We were aware of this, this need back in November. We could have come to the Finance Committee earlier with this request, but I found in the past that when these types of things come in early in the year, the Finance Committee has asked the department to simply go through the year and see if there's a need at the end of the year to make those transfers. So just wanted to add that on. That's part of the reason why this transfer is here now and it wasn't put before the Finance Committee back in December. So.
Move it here once again. Oh, sorry.
Just real quick, and I want to keep us going on track because now we have 20 minutes to get to the rest of the articles. Yeah, I know. I know how you feel about it. But nonetheless, Mike, in the future, my personal preference, and I think we ought to talk about this in the future, my preference is that if something unforeseen comes up, it'd be asked, requested as a reserve fund transfer at the time. That's my personal preference and we should discuss it more and I'll, I'll ask that it be added to an agenda item after tonight. So, you know, we don't need to do the forensics on it now. More comments from the committee, please.
With all due respect, Mr. Chair, I'm wondering why we can't do the reserve fund now. It gives the.
We're gonna do the reserve fund now. We're gonna, we're not gonna have the discussion as to when this request should have been made because nothing's gonna change it. Here it is. We're gonna, we're gonna press on with the agenda. But if there's any questions on this particular item, I'm happy to entertain them. I'm just not going to debate whether or not this request should have been made then or now. It's irrelevant.
I believe the, through the chair, with all due respect, I believe the request is being made now.
Right, which is why I want to move on. If everybody's done commenting on it, we'll vote on it.
All right.
Any more questions? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Kim.
Just, I make a motion that we deny this request.
It has been moved. Can I get a second? No seconds. How can I get another motion?
I'll move, we approve this, this transfer as stated with the understanding that we do, we should probably come up with a clear and concise manner as to when these are made and that should be something we should consider in our possible Finance Committee First Amendment to our, to our handbook about reserve fund transfers. But I think that right now, we're in the critical position of needing to do it. And I don't, and I think it needs to be voted. So the motion is to approve the transfer.
Any seconds up there?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of, vote to recommend approval or to approve the reserve fund transfer in the amount of $12,189. What's the source? Mike? Just from.
The source is the reserve fund.
From the reserve fund. Thank you, obviously. Okay. Discussion. Okay, none heard. We'll do a voice vote. Pete, I, Craig?
Hi.
Kathy?
No.
Jody?
Hi.
Katie?
Hi.
Joyce? Joyce, you're muted.
So sorry, I thought I was unmuted. Abstained. I'm saying it over here and not acknowledged it.
So you figuratively and literally abstained, but thank you very much. Did Jim or Doug, have Jim and Doug joined us?
They have not.
Deirdre? Okay. So if you would help me out later, if they join us and I don't see them, would you let me know, just so I include them?
So it's.
Okay.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so I believe the motion passes a vote four to one, two, with one abstention.
Yes.
Okay. The next item up for discussion or for consideration is the remaining articles that we deferred in the past. Before we get to the, actually, trying to think of the best way to do this, before we get to those, Carol, would you mind walking us through the spreadsheet that's in the meeting materials? I believe it is the operating FY22 Operating Budget Select Board, April 28, 2021, unless you think it's different and we'll look at that.
No, that's the one they could send over today. So if you look in the materials, you'll see in column L, I have with fiscal year in brackets, April 15. That's the budget that the Select Board voted on Monday. In column AN, you'll see that it's a clear, there's no color coding on that. That is fiscal year '22 and in parentheses, it's April 6. That is the document that the FinCom had at their last meeting. In column AO, it's the changes that happened for the April 15. So all it is, is a subtraction of column AN to column R. And you'll see that in the first line, it was a reduction to the selectmen, Town Administrative Budget salary line of $12,139.76. That's the removal of part of the executive assistant too, because the funding's going to come from the marijuana impact fees in the fall. If you want to scroll down, the next, changes are only in column AO and they're highlighted.
So real quick, if I can summarize, and please correct me if I state this wrong, but the FinCom recommended approval of the position, but recommended that the Select Board and the, and the Town Administrator look at funding that with Marijuana Impact Fund, which it appears that they did. And I believe that they did through, only through half the year, through the fall. And then they'll look at it again. Once there's additional fund, if and when there's more funds available, they'll make the same assessment potentially. So that, in other words, the request for the administrative support was included in the budget, just a different funding source. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So that's the only change that happened to the general government line, which is line 68. In the AO column, you'll see in pink, it's just the total that that's, that's the effect of the change for general government.
Page, on page four, it looks like, page, page three, okay?
So if you want to just keep going, the next change is on page five. And it is under the DPW on line 117. And that's to the salary line. That's an increase of $13,439.73. That was to give additional DPW summer help, increase the salary line for that. The next change is on line 124. That is the transfer station. It was an increase of $32,036.22. And that's to increase the transfer station salary to reflect a full FTE. If you go to the next page, you'll see on line 131, the Public Works budget increased from April 6 to April 15 by $45,675.95. And that's just a combination of the summer help increase and the transfer station FTE. The next change is on line 141, Council on Aging. That above service level was decreased by 50%. So the salary line was decreased by $22,836.19. The one, line 142 is expenses. That was decreased by $1,500 for the postage. Again, it was half of what the above service level request was for. Totally on line 148, a decrease in Health and Human Services because of the Council on Aging reduction in the above level service request of $24,336.19 total. The next change is on the next page. That's on line 164. And that is to the salary line in Recreation. That was decreased by $9,200. It's to decrease the funding for the teen program coordinator to be funded in the fall, anticipating to be funded in the fall by marijuana impact fees. So on line 174, Culture and Rec was decreased, just a total of 9,200, as I said, for the decreased funding at this point for the teen program coordinator, but that will hopefully take place in the fall, when the free cash certified for the fall town meeting. And those are all of the changes and the net effect to the overall budget is zero.
So in summary, the FinCom's vote last week of recommended changes to the Select Board, all were adopted. And this is the result. Again, we didn't specify how they got there, but we asked that they look at them and it appears that each one of them was adopted, again, resulting in zero change to the bottom line. Is that an accurate assessment? I'm sorry?
That is correct. You're right.
Okay. Any more just comments where I haven't started a discussion or haven't entertained motions on this yet, but any more comments before we, before I take a motion? And none heard. I would like to take a motion on this.
I'll move, we recommend approval. The budget is written.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to the Finance Committee vote to recommend approval of Article 3, as written. Discussion.
Yeah, I attended and I know you did, Pete, as well, the Select Board meeting when they voted this. And it was, it was the suggestions or the requests that we had made and it tied out pretty well after you went through the whole thing. And thank you, Carol, for putting in this format. It was easy to look at.
You're welcome.
Any more comments? Okay, we'll take a, we'll take a vote. I don't see that Doug or Jim have joined. So it'll be based on. Pete, yay. Craig?
Yay.
Kathy?
Yay.
Joyce?
Yay.
Jody?
Yay.
Katie?
Yay.
Okay. Article passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna move. Please, Mr. McCaffrey, go ahead.
Just a quick point to make sure we assign responsibility for creating a document with the revised budget in it, since it's different from the Finance Committee report. I just want to make sure we, Mike, if you could just confirm that we're gonna have that prepared so that it can be distributed at town meeting as well?
My News Committee report received, it's exactly as the 415 budget is. That's what's printed in the flyer.
Oh, so we ended up getting it in on time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, it's an excellent point. And we may be adding a one-page supplement with our, with these recommendations that, on the articles that we're voting tonight. So there could be a one-page supplement in addition. Mr. Chair McCaffrey. Okay, if we could, please draw everybody's attention to Article 5. That is the enterprise, which one is it?
Sewer.
Sewer Enterprise. Let's see. Let's see, Carol, any changes that we need to go through on the budget for the Sewer Enterprise?
Well, the only change that from the original was a small adjustment for indirect costs. Based on the reductions that we made from the April 6 to the April 15 adjustment because of the Select Board being reduced, it reduced the indirect, just a small amount.
Okay, could you kindly just breeze through that based on the FY22 Enterprise Funds PDF file, which is, you know, essentially a spreadsheet, a table?
On the indirect one?
Yes, please. Oh, yes. And I'm talking about Sewer Enterprise, Article 5.
Are you looking at the full budget? Or are you looking at just indirects?
Oh, let's look at the full budget because that's what we're gonna vote. I don't need to go through it line by line, but if the indirect costs are shown, which I'm looking for.
Right. So the indirect costs are on, it'd be the last item before the total on the expense line.
Okay.
You'll see that it's $241,227.
I'm not seeing that. I do see it. I do see it. Transfer to General Fund 241 to 27. It doesn't say it's indirect, but you're saying that that 241 to 27 has been incurred. It, let's see. FY22 requests.
That's in Article 3. You'll see that amount in Article 3, the 241 to 27.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Jody.
Um, I'm, oh, never mind. I answered my own question. I was, I was looking at something that I thought was a, I was, I was thinking that the 241 was a total and it's not. It's a, it's another line item in that budget. So yeah, I was getting confused. So I see where that last line under expenses is transfer to general funds. And the last cell is 241 to 27. So that's the indirect cost amount that's in the expenses for the sewer division.
Okay.
I read it too now. Thank you.
Yeah, I was thinking it was a total amount of the numbers above and I was getting confused.
Confused because I had numbers that didn't add up to that, obviously. So yes.
Exactly. That was, that was my confusion too. It takes us a few minutes to get up to your speed, Carol.
Okay, any further discussion or questions on Article 5? None heard. Can I have a motion, please?
Move, we recommend approval of Article 5.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we vote to recommend Article 5 as written. Discussion. Okay, none heard. Pete, yay. Craig?
Yay.
Kathy?
Yay.
Joyce?
Yay.
Jody?
Yay.
And Katie?
Yay.
And I don't.
Mr. Chair?
Jim or Doug? Go ahead, Joyce.
My apologies. I don't know how long I'll be able to stay on this meeting. I just broke my foot just before we started the meeting and I'm very uncomfortable.
I'm sorry to hear that. And we'll keep an eye on you. So we'll.
If I end up leaving, you'll know why.
Okay. Are you okay? Did you miss a call, anybody?
No, I, I know that it's broken. It's really gross. But I didn't want to miss the meeting, but I may end up having to leave.
Okay, all right. If we don't hear from you, Joyce, we will not assume that you've lost the mute button. We'll just.
You don't log off, we'll dial 911 if you don't.
Thank you. You know, Finance Committee is really important to me.
Blood, sweat and tears. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to Article 6, the Water Enterprise Fund. And the same Enterprise Fund document or spreadsheet, if I can find it, the table, is located on page two of the attachment. And if, Carol, if you just walk us through that real quick.
Sure. So if you go down to the total of the expenses and go up three lines, you'll see the indirect charges are $294,833.
Okay. And that reflects the changes that we just previously voted on as well. It's consistent across documents.
Right, exactly.
Okay. Any more comments before we take a motion? None heard. I'll take a motion.
I'll take, I move that we recommend approval of Article 6 as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The Finance Committee recommend approval of Article 6, the Water Enterprise Fund budget as written. Discussion. None heard. We'll take a vote. Pete, yay. Craig?
Yay.
Kathy?
Yay.
Joyce?
I think she left.
Okay. Jody?
Yay.
Katie?
Yay.
Thank you. Just a note that we're down to five members. Just a note that we're down to five members now. Nobody else is permitted to leave. Or we will lose our quorum. Okay, Article Seven is the Stormwater Enterprise Fund Budget. Please, Carol, if you would just lead us through the spreadsheet and just point out where the change is made.
The only change was made, again, it's to the indirect, which is the transfer to general fund line. And it is, if you take the. Total for the expense line and go up to the last amount, it's one hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred forty dollars.
Excellent, okay. Thank you. Any? Comments from the committee? None heard. I'll take a motion.
A move that we recommend approval of Article Seven as presented in the revised chart.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. The Finance Committee recommend approval of Article Seven, the Stormwater Enterprise Fund as written. Discussion. None heard. I'll go to a voice voice vote. Pete, yay. Craig?
Yay.
Kathy?
Yay.
Joyce? I'm sorry about that. Sorry, have it. I'm just following the list to Jody.
Jim's Jim's coming in right now.
Okay. Probably will bypass him. Jody?
Yay.
And Katie?
Yay.
Okay. Okay, so. Deirdre, if you would. Record those. I have notes that passes unanimously without Joyce here, five to zero. Article Six, I should have synopses, also passed five to zero. Article Five passed six to zero. And are six and zero and Article Three passed six and zero.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, everybody for. For that, let's see, next on the agenda. Is we're gonna start our pre-town meeting public hearing, so I'll call that. To order or open the pre-town meeting public hearing. This is the portion of the meeting that we do regularly where we essentially read through. The motions nearly verbatim. We'll have. Very, very brief discussion or synopsis of the articles. We won't go through full discussion, but we could if. If members choose to, if committee members choose to. And we'll just, we're not gonna revote anything, but we'll we'll. Give what the Finance Committee has, we'll we'll synopsize what the Finance Committee recommends as we've done in our previous proceedings. So with that said, we'll go to, we'll start off with Article One. If you could make sure that you read through. The motions as provided to us as close to verbatim as you can. And then we'll go through a bit of discussion if necessary. So leading off, I think, is is it Katie?
Yep, it's me. I've got Article One. Article One is for unpaid bills. The motion says I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of five hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-one cents. To pay the following unpaid bills incurred by town departments from previous fiscal years or take any other action in relation thereto. So we have select board, two hundred seventy dollars, me, Tallerman and Costa. Town clerk, seventy-nine dollars, LHS Associates. Town clerk, fourteen dollars, Lisa Harden reimburse postage. Town clerk, forty-one dollars and ten cents, Lisa Harden reimburse supply. IT admin, fifty-five dollars and four cents, CDWG. And then weights and measures, one hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-seven cents for fiscal year twenty expense reimbursement. Again, the total is five hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-one cents.
Okay, thanks, Katie, and then we'll just make sure that we mentioned the majority required to pass, in this case, four-fifths. And the also the FinCon recommendations.
Yep, we recommend approval of this article.
Okay. Any, does anybody feel like they wanna add any discussion or comments on that? Okay, none heard. Thank you. That brings us to Article Two. And that is additional wages and expenses. That's by me, so this is basically a article which allows the the town to transfer funds within the current fiscal year to. Help bring the balance or help bring the budget to the end of the year through interdepartmental transfers. So motion we made, I moved that the town vote to transfer from the following accounts, sums of money listed below to fund additional wages and expenses to the accounts listed below. Which were not sufficiently funded under Article Three Operating Budget of the June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty Annual Town Meeting. Transfer from Town General Government, seventy-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars and fourteen cents. General Insurance, seven thousand, three hundred and two dollars and sixty-four cents. Health and Human Services, thirteen thousand, six hundred seventeen and fifty-nine cents. Culture and Recreation, eleven thousand, six hundred and fifteen and dollars and thirteen cents. Public Works, an amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-one cents for a total of one hundred twenty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-nine. Dollars and thirty cents, and those are transferred to Public Safety, ninety-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and six cents. And to Employee Benefits, thirty thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. For the same total as previously read. This would be a simple majority vote and the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Article Three is the op. Let's see, this is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, really. Could um, the town administrator or the finance director clarify for me because. I've been receiving some questions about the exorbitant amount in public safety. What what happened? If I might ask, if it's an appropriate time to ask?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I may, the public safety overrun has to do with the fire department. We had several. Several firefighters that went out for a very long period of time on injured on duty. Those shifts have to be have to be covered. And it was because of that. Of that absence of those individuals and the coverage that caused the the overage. That's the that's the long and the short of it. I mean, we can certainly provide more detailed information. You know, at a at a future meeting for the committee, but that's that's essentially the driver of that cost.
I've got a follow-up question, Mike, without getting into too much detail on. Injuries and medical issue, personal medical status, any of those COVID related?
Uh, no.
Okay. Any more comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I ju- I just hope that the fire chief looks into the OSHA. Issues and make sure that everything is safe there and maybe think about. Rather than automatically having staff, if someone's out, that maybe you could call in someone as it's needed. Not telling anyone how to run their business or anything, just thinking how things work where I we're down where I used to work. I'd appreciate it. That's an awful lot of money and is it gonna be every year or? Are people use, okay, I'll stop at that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to Article Three. Which is the operating budget for FY. Twenty-two. So I moved that the town vote to fix the compensation of elected officers, provide for reserve fund and to raise an appropriate, including including appropriations from taxation by transfer from available funds, the sum of thirty-seven million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. To defray charges and expenses to the town, including debt and interest and a reserve fund for the general fund for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-twenty-one is outlined in. Table two of the Finance Committee Report with the following revenue sources. Before I proceed. Carol, any changes to these amounts based on the budget that we just voted? Carol?
Yes.
Any changes? So I'm reading Article Three. Any changes to the motion amounts?
No, those were updated. After the April fifteenth update.
Thank you very much. Okay, so for taxation. Thirty-five million, nine hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars, ambulance fund, four hundred and eight thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars, perpetual care interest, three hundred thirty-two dollars, sale of cemetery lots, seven thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars. Cell tower revenue, fifty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, bond premium release, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars. Marijuana impact fees, ninety-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars. And to authorize the following transfers, sewer fund indirect cost to general fund, two hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred twenty-seven dollars, water fund indirect cost to general fund. Two hundred ninety-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-three dollars, and the storm water fund indirect cost to general fund. One hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. This will require a simple majority and the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Brings us to. If I can ask Jody, Jody and maybe Mike, do we have to read through these? I thought we haven't.
No.
Passed, but I just want to verify before we spend all the time doing this. We don't read through them verbatim here. But we certainly do at town meeting.
Correct.
That's correct.
And, okay, so I heard from Jody, I mean, excuse me, Deirdre and. And Mike and Jody, that's how we've done it. We did it last year, correct? Didn't read through verbatim.
And a clear explanation is oftentimes much better than the legalese that.
Yep, me speed reading.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I apologize. I apologize for that, so let's get back to it and I won't speed read. All right, so Article Four is the, excuse me, it is. Actually, I don't have Article Four, so.
Jim working.
Okay, so I'll take Article Four. Or is Jim on now?
Oh, yeah.
Great, thanks, Jim. So as as just discussed, Jim, I know you joined us late. We're really just going through each article. With a quick synopsis, give, make sure that you state what's required to. To pass during during town meeting in terms of the vote, whether it's a majority, simple majority or thirds or what what have you. And then please give what we voted to recommend. And then we'll just we'll have a moment of discussion if necessary, but then we'll press on with it.
Okay, so this is a simple majority vote. This is to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, eighty-five thousand dollars. For the estimated first year cost items contained in the contracts between. Town of Millis and SEIU Local Eight 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 and the Town of Millis and the Professional Firefighters Millis Local Forty-seven oh four. Effective July first, twenty-twenty-one, and I believe this was a. The FinCom has approved this.
Okay. Unless there's any comments or questions, we'll press on. Okay, Article Five is the sewer. Enterprise Fund. This article appropriates money for salaries, wages and expenses. In the amount of one million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. It requires a simple majority and the. Finance Committee recommends approval of this article. Any comments or questions? Article Six is the Enterprise Fund for Water. And it appropriates funds for salary, wages and expenses in the amount of one million, eight hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars, requires a simple majority. And Article Seven is the Enterprise Fund for Stormwater. Systems and utility. It transfers or excuse me, appropriates five hundred eighty-one thousand dollars, five hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars. In order to pass, it requires a simple majority vote and the Finance Committee recommends approval of the article. Onto Article Eight.
That is me. Article Eight is the Consent Article, which is essentially a consolidation of four. Annual standard articles which include. Amendments to the Personnel Plan. The Board of Health Appointing Authority, so this is the annual article that authorizes. The Board of Health to appoint any of its members to another town office or position for which it has appointing authority. Number three, revolving funds, authorizes towns to use revolving funds that have their own sources of revenue. To be accounted for separately from other town monies. And then number four, Community Preservation Fund. This is another annual article allocating community preservation funds into the various reserves. As required in the Community Preservation Act. This is a simple majority. Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Thank Craig, you have Article Nine?
I do. Article Nine is Phase Two of the Preservation and Rehabilitation of the Henry F. Walling map. Using CPA funds, so these monies are. Are a surcharge on property taxes that are set aside for specific community-related benefits. The cost will be one thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and it's a simple majority and the FinCom recommended approval.
Thanks, Craig. Keep going unless we interrupt you.
Article Ten is also CPA funds being used to. Construct a dugout for the Millis High School baseball team. It's this will use recreation funds from the CPC. As ten thousand, three hundred dollars, again, simple majority. This is actually a Brian. Brian Nichols Senior Project and he is. Being funded by the CPC to build these for the high school baseball team. And then Article. Eleven is also mine and this is the building repairs to. The train station, also known as the Lansing Millis Memorial Building, Lansing Millis Building. It's it's being recommended for dismissal at this time because we do not have sufficient funds. But this this article would have appropriated three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to. To stabilize the exterior of the building. The Select Board is looking for alternative ways. To keep the building weather tight while we investigate grant opportunities to fund this. So at this time, we're recommending dismissal. And that's it.
Okay. Think that brings us to the independent audit. Joyce will be, if she makes it back, hopefully, honchoing that article, but I'll take it. Article Twelve is for funds, appropriate funds for independent audit. This is annually required, I believe. For all audit, all accounts of the Department of the Town. It's for the amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, requires a simple majority and the FinCom recommends approval of the article. Article Thirteen is a vote to. Transfer from free cash, twenty thousand dollars in order to perform. An annual requirement again, or perhaps a interim, it looks like interim year inspections for personal property. In real estate interim year evaluations for the assessor's office. These are required periodically, requires the simple majority and the Finance Committee recommends approval. And then Article Fourteen, also Joyce will lead the discussion on this. Is a vote to. It's also, I believe, also for the assessor's office for recertification. For FY twenty-three in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. Yep, submitted by Board of Assessors. It requires a simple majority and the Finance Committee recommends approval of the article. Brings us to Article Fifteen. Article Fifteen is, I'll leave the discussion on that one. It is for the capital items. As proposed by the Capital Planning Committee. And recommended or were included in the articles that warrant by the finance, excuse me, by the Select Board. There are a total of six projects listed in the article for a total of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars with differing fund sources. Hundred seventy-one and change from free cash and then another four hundred and eighty-five thousand from the. And change from the Water Enterprise Reserve Fund. These, the articles for consideration here include leases for school buses, for computers for both for the school. A lease for a police cruiser. And then the last three projects listed there, which I'll go into much more detail are for. Actually, the next two are for quite a bit of money for. Design of a treatment plant or filtration system to deal with the town's PFAS. Problems at various wells. And this won't be the last of the funds that the town needs to secure one way or another to deal with PFAS. And then the last piece is that thirty thousand dollar emergency response plan, which is a requirement that the state has. Has put on us and all towns to have a response for, I believe it's actually for water utility specific. Jim, is that water utility specific or the entire town? Emergency management.
That's just for water. That's just.
Just for water. Okay, that's what, that's what I thought. Okay. So again, that's six hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Article Fifteen requires a simple majority and the Select Board, excuse me, the Finance Committee recommended approval of the article. Brings us to Article Sixteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCaffrey.
Just quickly. I think it might be helpful either for somebody to. Make sure the town understands that this is the design appropriation.
I agree.
It's not the, it's not an appropriation. For the actual construction of the filtration, so.
I agree, and I assure you I will be going in much more detail. I alluded to it in my comments at the. The preface to the Finance Committee report to Springtown Meeting.
Right.
But I will go into much more detail.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. I think we're at Article Sixteen. That is Joyce, so I'll take it. Article Sixteen is to vote to appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars to continue the. Town's tree trimming and removal efforts in order to increase the safety of roadways and sidewalks for residents and residences. It requires a simple majority and this Finance Committee recommends approval of the article. Article Seventeen. Kathy.
Seventeen. Oh, that's me, Mr. Chair. Sorry. Just. Okay, all right, I'm dealing with this. Think of your mother doing these things, okay? Article Seventeen, this article will appropriate forty. Article Sixteen, which one are we on, Mr. Chair?
Seventeen, Road Maintenance.
Thank you. This article will fund a hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-three cents for road maintenance and repairs. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Okay.
Okay.
Eighteen, this is a two-thirds majority vote. It's to appropriate twenty-three thousand dollars through. Three hundred for a new lease and purchase of computers from the middle schools. This is the first year.
Jim, I'm not sure if you'll cover it or not and, but essentially it's a, it's a standalone article because it's a new lease versus continuation and Mike Kozinski, could you just affirm that?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. No comments or questions heard. Article Nineteen, Doug will lead this. And essentially Article Nineteen is for appropriation of seven hundred and eleven. Thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars to pay for a drainage project at the vicinity of Village and Birch Streets. It's been a long. Or it's not an emerging problem. It's been a certainly a problem. It's been identified and been of concern to the DPW Director and neighbors of that area. Because on large storms, the area floods. The roads drainage and runoff spills into people's yards. So this project will, if approved, get funded and be executed to fix all that with the culvert system underneath the road and then repair the road. This will come from the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Many people have asked, where is all this funds from the Stormwater? Enterprise Fund going and you can see a sizable outlay. Here, this requires a two-thirds majority vote and the Finance Committee recommends approval of the article. Article Twenty.
That's mine. Article Twenty would acquire twenty-three, well, twenty-three point one acres more or less of land owned by Richard M. Braun. Using town funds. This land is located on Village Street. Exact location is more in the article. But for years, we've given this town a tax break. It's been what's called sixty-one A status and that allowed us to have the option to. To buy the land and write a first refusal when a bona fide offer was made. A developer has offered a million dollars for the land and the town has. Has the option to exercise the right to match that price. This article will allow the town to do that. There, the land is being purchased with a million dollars of borrowing to be paid back over twenty years. With a fifty thousand dollars of principal paid each year and interest computed on the outstanding balance. There is, there are no open space restrictions or recreation restrictions placed on the land. So the town will be able to do with this land as it sees fit. Since there are no open space or recreation restrictions, it's using general fund money. We would be able to build, we would be able to be able to leave it as open space, build fields. Or investigate other possibilities that would be beneficial to the town. If no reasonable use is found for the land, the land can then be resold at any point by the town. Since there are no restrictions placed on it. The reason that this is an appealing piece of property to so many. Is because of the options that it gives us. I wish we had a definite plan. But the way these projects work, they come forward, you have a hundred and eighty days, I believe it is, to act on them. And if you don't act within that timeframe. You lose your right to exercise your right of first refusal. So the Finance Committee and the Select Board have both voted to recommend approval of this article. And it's, it'll take a two-thirds majority to pass at town meeting.
Chairman.
I didn't recognize the voice, but I recognize whoever said that.
Donna, hi.
Hi, Donna, go ahead.
Just a quick question in terms of process, if this article passes, how do we, what's the next step? In terms of the borrowing, people are asking whether there'll be an override question, et cetera. Just thought I'd put it out there.
Now, this is borrowing within the existing tax structure. So there are, within the existing debts, debt structure, so there will be no override. It will not increase taxes at all. There'll be no impact on taxes. It'll use existing funds.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCaffrey.
Just to follow up and amplify what Mr. Schultz had to say, the next step, if this. Article is adopted, then the town has the funding available. We will then go to town council and create an appropriate purchase and sale agreement. Exercise our right to purchase the property. And once that PNS is signed with the property owner, then we will have the funds available to make the purchase.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCaffrey, can I, I'm gonna hold on one moment. I'm just gonna pose a question and that is. The hundred and eighty day limit, I think you probably know more about that than we do. Is that on the towns, is that a time limit on the town to make a decision on what it wants to do or does the town? Town have to close on the property inside of a hundred and eighty days?
I'm delighted that you think I know the answer to this question, but I'm gonna have to disappoint you. There's two things going on here. One is there's tolling of some of this timeframe because of COVID. And secondly, I think that we need to make this, we certainly need to have this adopted at the Springtown Meeting. Because if we don't have the funds available within a month or two, then our, our time will toll. And we will not able, not, we will not be able to exercise the option. And Mr. Chairman, that, that was my question. I didn't know when the exact time drop dead date was on it.
Mr. Kozinski, do you care to opine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this, just to confirm what Chairman McCaffrey said, this item. Because of the state of emergency, this was one of the items where there was a tolling of the time limit. So I cannot give you a precise date, but I will tell you that. It is, the timeframe is, is for the town to be able to. Basically close the purchase, so I would see it as very impractical. Should the town decide not to go forward at this town meeting to purchase the property or to authorize the purchase. I would see it impractical, if not impossible, to move forward with this at a later time.
Thank you. And if you could just, just, just because I hate giving an answer like that, I understand it's the right answer, it's best we know now. If you could just look at it before town meeting, in case that question's asked, I'd like to be able to give. A definite date if we know it.
I will.
Town Council has advised us, so we've got it somewhere. Yeah, I figured we must.
Yes, I would have, I would have to confirm if the tolling has been released and, and then based on that the time, but. I will be talking with town council about this again prior to Saturday's meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, and I heard one more question possibly wanting to be posed. Is that Ms. Kabibo again?
Yes, I just, could you just elaborate? And I think this is important for whatever audience we have here is the no impact on taxes comment that was made because. I just want to make it, want to be clear on that point. So if someone can elaborate there.
A proposition, there's two ways the town can borrow. It can borrow through a debt exclusion or proposition two and a half override. Or borrow through, without raising taxes. A proposition two and a half override raises taxes. We did those for the school, the library and the police station. This would be paid just like it was any other bill in the town. It wouldn't increase taxes at all. General funds that we already have on hand would be used for this, for this purchase. No additional increase in taxes would be incurred. And, and it would use state money, taxation money that's already slated to be collected. It wouldn't change our rates. It wouldn't change the bills any. So it's just another way to allocate money that we normally would have on hand to a different purpose. We do it quite often with things such as, we've done with fire trucks in the past, we've done it with ambulances. We do it for a lot of. Lower dollar, short-term borrowing.
Thank you very much for that.
Mr. Chair, if I might just.
Certainly.
I believe that the town, the Select Board first caught wind of this back in November. And I'd be interested to know, because the town people have been stating, why is this happening so fast? So compared to when the offer was made. To why realize you have to go to town council and see if it's a bona fide offer or something, but it could have been like January or February when. The public caught wind of it, so. I'd hope the next time that when there is a hundred and eighty days, a hundred and twenty days that we'd be a more. Take more care of the timeline that we have. Thank you.
Craig, you'll note those and use your discretion to include those in your comments, please.
Included them in the notes if they come up and as soon as I get an actual drop dead date, I will put that in the notes too and we'll have all that information ready.
Okay. Any more, I'm not gonna cut off comments, questions. I think these are all good. Any more comments and questions before we move on? Okay, Article Twenty-One, Doug will take the lead on that. See. Since he, he's not here, so I will take it. So Article Twenty-One is a zoning bylaw amendment. This particular one. Deals with performance-based solar ordinance. I am not very educated on this right now. But essentially it places additional. You know, I'm not even gonna guess at it. Mike Kozinski, could you help me out, please? I don't want to get it wrong.
Well, I won't say I'm a specialist in this area, so. I really don't want to speak to it beyond what the planning board has already conveyed to the, to the Finance Committee in regards to this article. But I believe that. Did, did, I guess I'll ask a question, did. Either Mr. Weiss or a member of the planning board have an opportunity to discuss this with the, with the Finance Committee?
They did. I'm looking for my notes right now. And unfortunately Doug is our zoning expert and he could answer these questions cold, probably.
Mr. Chair.
Not here. Go ahead, Jody, thank you.
So I looked into this a little bit earlier today or yesterday. So this would allow for certain types of properties within Millis.
There we go.
Agricultural properties to install ground, large-scale ground-mounted solar installations. From what we heard in our meeting, I believe it was April seventh. The land would still need to be used for agricultural purposes. The solar panels would have to be. Over eight feet tall. There would be specific setbacks. Required including visual setbacks. To be able to put these installations on those properties. And from what was provided to us only about somewhere between eight and ten properties in Millis would qualify for this. Because those properties need to be at least fifteen acres in total and currently used for agricultural or horticultural purposes.
Jody, thank you very much. So. The article will require a two-thirds majority to, to pass and. Jody, if Doug is an extended absence, I'm gonna nominate you to take the article. Thank you very much. You saved my bacon.
Good thing I didn't say anything, Miss Jody.
I'll make sure to bring Deirdre's notes from April seventh then.
I'm looking through mine and I'm not finding them. As soon as you said agricultural land, that gave me a half a clue, but not nearly as much as you. So thank you very much, Jody. I appreciate that. Article Twenty-Two is the article to. Who, a man zoning by law amendment on parking dimensions, which we had quite a bit of discussion on as well. This amendment, if approved, would essentially allow. Different, it would alleviate some requirements on developers. With regards to parking dimensions, potentially they could make the parking dimensions smaller. If it were to pass and there's certainly concerns on that from safety aspect and other things that we discussed in our, our proceeds. Our, our meetings, so. The Finance Committee recommended disapproval of this because we would like the zoning waiver process to continue as it has for many, many years. And I'll leave it at that. There will, I'm sure there will be discussion further on this one. So this particular Article Twenty-Two requires a two-thirds majority. Any comments?
Well, actually, Mr. Chairman. I'm muted, I think. No, I'm not. Since it's a move to dismiss, I believe it's just a simple majority for dismissal.
Okay. I'm gonna make a note of that because that's one of my items that. We talked about. That I alluded, we would talk about during the proceeds. In terms of the art, do the articles reflect our recommendations and how they're worded? So whether it's dismissal or recommend disapproval, so. Mr. Kozinski, could you kindly take that as an action between now and Saturday, obviously, and hopefully before that to just make sure that we mirror, mirror the, the. Verbiage for the motions to what our actual FinCom voted recommendations are.
Very well. I will check on that and make sure that our, our quantum of vote is properly allocated.
Yep, thank you. And just for.
Mr. Chairman.
One moment, one moment. If you could just, I think that's actually the only article that we're talking about that, although there were some for dismissal. So I heard two Mr. Chairmans, one from Mr. McCaffrey and who was the other one?
I think I echoed myself.
Okay, Mr. McCaffrey, go ahead. You got two, you got two chances.
No, it's just, it's just an issue on the, the way the motion is written. I think the correct motion is a motion to dismiss.
Correct.
And I do agree that that is, requires a simple majority to dismiss. It requires a two-thirds majority to be adopted.
Okay.
So for example, if there was a motion to approve and it failed of two-thirds, it would not be approved.
I don't doubt it. I just want to know from the experts, so. I don't doubt it. I just want to know from the experts. So. Thank you.
Be amended, motion, final motion.
The main motion that's been drafted, it calls for approval. So if the motion is to dismiss, it has to be rewritten.
Correct.
Yes, and I can forward those updated motions to the finance committee tomorrow.
Okay, great.
And there's, there's a couple more of those that will go for dismissal, just for I think you have a record of those and we can go, I'll give you a call tomorrow, Mike, and we can go through them. But there's a, a few others, like 30 and 31, for instance, are recommended for dismissal. So we just want to make sure that document reads properly.
Right. I believe 30 and 31 are already all set. But, but yes, this article, Article 22 has to be updated.
Okay, great. Okay, moving on. Article 24, also a zoning bylaw amendment. This is for compact car parking. This makes changes to the quantity and the placement of, I believe, placement of compact car parking requirements. The finance committee recommended approval of the article, requires a two-thirds vote to adopt. Article 25 is also a zoning committee, excuse me, a zoning bylaw amendment. This particular one is somewhat unique or, or new. It's for, it, it essentially would put the same zoning requirements on cannabis delivery entities or operations, the same or similar zoning requirements as the recreational zoning, the zoning requirements on, excuse me, cannot speak tonight. Recreational marijuana sales. And so adopt, the finance committee recommends adoption of this article, essentially to ensure that we have rules in place when these businesses are allowed to begin to operate via state law or the cannabis commission's regulations that they've put out. Again, we recommend approval of the article. It requires a two-thirds, excuse me, requires a I'm on article, I just want to make sure I'm on Article 24. I think I may have said Article 25, 24. It requires a two-thirds vote. Okay, sorry about that. Article 25.
That's Kathy.
Kathy, I'm off the hot seat and you're in it. Kathy.
Unmuted. Oh, the waiver, that difficult waiver of town building projects that you gave me, Mr. Chair. This article will add a town bylaw waiving all building permit fees for town building construction projects. The finance committee recommends approval of this article by a majority vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kathy, Article 26. Jody.
Yep. Article 26 would authorize the town to sell a 0.94 acre parcel off, of, of land off Acorn Street, which it's identified by parcel ID and map on the warrant. It is more or less behind 95 and 99 Acorn Street. It's not sighted on a road. It's only accessible by right-of-way from the adjacent properties. And the finance committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you. Please keep going.
Article 27, which would be the pilot agreement for the new Clyde Brown School. And this would authorize the select board to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. That's where the P I L O T comes from with Select Energy. This would allow Select to make annual payments of $6,784 over 20 years instead of paying personal property taxes every year on a declining value. So be higher payments upfront, lower payments in future years for solar panels to be installed at the new Clyde Brown School. This just evens out the stream of payments to the town and the expenses of Select over that 20-year period for the solar panels that we would like to install at Clyde Brown. And the finance committee recommends approval of this article.
Jody, could, could you do me a, or I just request that you clearly spell out what pilot is in your, in your discussion? So that people realize it's not a pilot program in the sense that, hey, you have a pilot program. It's a payment in lieu of taxes program. And you may have just done that, but I was spacing, but I just want to make sure that, that
Yeah, that was in my, that was in my first sentence.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I was spacing. I'm trying to keep track of what, where we are, where we're going. So thank you very much.
Yeah, no worries. I, I do intend to do that because yeah, well, I will speak more slowly at town meeting, but in pre
No, no, honestly, it wasn't you. I really, I really was not paying attention. I was looking at which, which of Joyce's and Doug's articles, if they're coming up. So they're none, please proceed.
Okay, I believe Katie has 28.
Yes, Article 28 would transfer from free cash, $5,000 for Medicare Medicaid reimbursement services. Standard article, requires a simple majority. Finance committee recommends approval.
Article 29, which would replenish the unemployment insurance fund. So it would fund the town's unemployment insurance funds that are set aside. We replenish this every few years or hopefully, well, most likely every year for the next few years from which to pay any unemployment insurance claims that arise from former town employees. This article would be $7,700 and should provide enough to cover any fiscal year 2021 claims. And the finance committee recommends approval of this article. Then Article 30 would add funds to the other post-employment benefits fund. And this, currently the town is covering claims as needed out of general operating funds. But, you know, this is something that we need to be looking at. We need to start setting aside additional funds. It'll help our bond rating. We can't ignore it forever, but we are recommending dismissal of this article at this town meeting due to a lack of funds at this time. But it is something that we need to take a hard look at and discuss at future town meetings. And Article 31 would add additional funds to the stabilization fund. We have a policy to maintain a stabilization fund equal to 5% of our general fund budget expenditures each year to be used for unforeseen and emergency purposes. Right now, the fund is above 5%. So we are recommending dismissal of this article at this town meeting.
Okay, excellent. That is all of the articles. I'm just going to make two quick comments. Katie, on Article 28, I don't know what you know, so that's why, and you didn't mention it. So that's why I want to make sure that I just pointed out. And is my, my understanding is that $5,000 usually yields the town somewhere in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $50,000 in Medicaid reimbursements. I could have that wrong, but if you haven't included that in your discussion notes, please do. And you can, I'm sure, reach out to Carol or anybody that's had their article in the past to find out exactly. That's usually money well spent, and I just want to make sure that that point's made. And then, Kathy, welcome. And then Kathy, I, I, I know I don't need to say this, but I'll say it anyway. Jim, Jim McKay made a, he provided materials today. I think they're posted to the meeting materials, but he made presentation on Monday night's select board meeting, which I know you were listening. There's a lot of information that can be given in addition to this $143,000 and change appropriation, which would help convey the work that he and the town, all, you know, the town entities or many of the town entities are doing to improve the roads in Milis. And I know that that's important to you as well. So please take the time to convey, in addition to this $143,000 appropriation, the chapter 90, as well as some of the, I think there's funds from other unexecuted projects from last year. So if you could, please include those in your discussion at your discretion. Anybody else? Yep. Thank you. Anybody else have any more comments? I just want to, actually, I'm going to make one comment, additional comment. And that is, you know, I, I heard from many, I heard from at least four people after I wrote the comments that I included at the preface of the finance report. And all four of those comments were really along the lines of my comments on the enterprise fund effort. And really the statement of that the, that the costs or the, the efforts weren't tracked accurately. And that is in no way, I, I believe that is an accurate statement, but I think it's, could have been said better. And, and in no way was I trying to, you know, really call out anybody's efforts, specifically not Deirdre's and, and not anybody else. It really is a way to say that we, we weren't recording and tracking hours in, in those departments. And it was actually the enterprise fund advisory committee, I believe, Kathy McGinnis, that asked them to do that. And they did. And, and they did, as Mr. Valente has noted, they did an excellent job doing it. I could have been more specific as to say we weren't recording hours at all. We were just using a model and a methodology that had not been documented and we hadn't validated that. So in no way are my comments meant to disparage anybody's efforts or call anybody out. And I wanted to say that to Deirdre publicly, and I'll say it a little bit more eloquently again during town meeting. So with that said, I'm prepared to move on to the next agenda item unless there's any more comments on this portion of the agenda.
So are you closing the town meeting?
And if there's more comments, one second. Any more comments or discussion? And I'll take a motion to close this portion.
So moved.
It's been moved. And I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded that we close the pre-town meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nays. And there's at least two extensions, Deirdre. Okay, so that closes the pre-town meeting, public hearing portion of the meeting. We have some bills to pay. Deirdre, can you direct me to that?
Sure. So the first one.
Those payable, is it our, our town publishing?
Yes.
Looks like there's an invoice and the amount of $5,148 requiring payment for 40-page fitness committee, finance, finance committee report mailing 350 copies and setup mailing for 350 copies.
Yes, we did additional, yeah.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Jody.
I move that we approve a bill in the amount of $5,148 to our town publishing for printing costs for the finance committee report for the spring town meeting of May 1st.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bill of $5,148 for printing of the finance committee report in support of a spring town meeting. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor, say aye. Nays. The ayes have it. And there's one more bill. And that is for Community Newspaper Company. It is in the amount of $54.12. And it is for posting of the public meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Jody.
I move that we approve the bill from Community Newspaper Company in the amount of $54.12 for advertising of town meeting and pre-town meeting, I'm assuming.
Pre-town meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Second, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the bill for $54,000, $54.12 for advertising of pre-town meeting. Town meeting, any discussion? None heard? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any, any nays? Okay. Next up on the agenda is old business, new business. And I don't have any, actually, I'll, I'll do it now. We have, I've got one item that I wanted to say, and that's really just to I'll do it more publicly on Saturday, but I wanted to thank Mr. McCaffrey for his service, extended service to the town of Milis. I don't have his biography. I've only been in town myself for six years, seven years, going on seven years now. He, whether he knows it or not, he's a fantastic example of a public servant, in my opinion. And I wanted to thank him for his service on behalf of the finance committee. And I'll do so again at the, during the, the spring town meeting. So, Mr. McCaffrey, thank you very much. We appreciate your service to the town of Milis.
I second that motion.
Bye. He's my first moderator. No, he wasn't. He was my second moderator, sorry.
I, I don't know what, you know, I don't, just because he's not rerunning doesn't mean he's totally out of the, the picture, but we did ask him during the, the capital planning committee if he would remain on the committee. He hasn't said one way or another. He's hedging a little bit, but maybe, maybe if the meetings kept, keep getting held by a Zoom and he can remote in from Kitcot or wherever he is, that he'll do that. But thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. We've got some minutes to approve.
Mr. Chair.
Hey, Jody.
I move that we approve the minutes of April 14th as written.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of April 14th meeting. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Hey, Jody.
I just want to thank Deirdre for her excellent work in keeping notes for us. It's really important during these meetings that we, we keep these detailed notes. It's really helpful personally in my preparation for town meeting and discussing the articles, to be able to look back at these detailed notes from all the other different committees. And I really just want to encourage townspeople, when they have questions about articles, Deirdre's notes from our finance committee meetings, if they don't have time to sit through a YouTube video or a, a video of our meetings, looking through the transcript is a really fast way to kind of get up to speed quickly on these articles. And I just really appreciate the amount of work that goes into this. It's super helpful. And yeah, it, it makes our job a lot easier. So thank you, Deirdre.
You're welcome.
I, I agree with that. And I, so I've been taking notes all along. I probably, you know, since I started my, my chairmanship and I probably have 20, 30 pages of notes of chicken scratch. And I don't know, I told Deirdre that I would send them her way. I never did. And thank God I didn't, because I don't think that would have helped her. You know, I can, I can decipher some things in here. But her notes are incredibly detailed. I don't know how many times she has to re-watch the video, if at all, or she just gets it all the first time. That would be a superhuman if she just got it from her notes, listening to us, me mumble the first time around. But Deirdre, thank you very much. How do you take notes, Deirdre? Do you watch the video? Me mumble the first time around, but, uh, Deirdre, thank you very much. How do you take notes, Deirdre? Do you watch the video?
Uh, it's, uh, I jot it a lot of stuff down, start them, and then if I have questions, then I'll, uh, watch part of the video or. It depends.
Yeah. Well, uh. I, I apologize for you having to re-watch the videos, so. But thank you, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so, um, with that said, we'll have a, uh, we'll have a vote of. It's been moved and seconded, and that concludes discussion. All those in favor of approving the minutes, unless we already voted. I can't, I'm sorry. Okay, um, all those in favor approving the minutes from the April fourteenth finance committee meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
And I heard, uh, everybody except for Joyce and Doug. Jimmy still there?
I am.
Thank you. And you, you're an aye?
Yes.
Okay, so we have no, uh, extensions or necessary extensions, uh, Deirdre, thank you very much. Okay, back to the agenda. That should, uh, go ahead.
I had posted that the, um, finance committee would meet at one-thirty on Saturday, um. I guess in order to, to get, um, motions or, or.
I don't.
Think that's sufficient time?
Yep, we traditionally prior to the actual meeting, um, I don't, I don't have any reason not to do that. Really, the question is whether it should be at one or one-thirty. And, uh, I'd like to hear from the committee.
I think one-thirty should be sufficient. I think one is a little bit too early.
I, I agree with Jody. I think we have everything well on hand. We've needed those hours when there are many outstanding issues, but. I don't think we have any.
Um, any more comments? I do have a question, um. Uh, Mike, anything that you, that we are overlooking that would require us to, um. Have a quick, uh, whether it be a quick meeting that we would call the order or any type of preparation that, that, uh, is still outstanding?
Um, not that I'm aware of. I think setting up a one-thirty meeting of the finance committee is prudent, um. Just in case anything should change between now and then, and certainly when the town meeting actually starts. I'd recommend the finance committee basically just recess the meeting, um, that way if there needs to be. Uh, because of any developments at the town meeting, there needs to be any action by the finance committee as a body. You have the ability to do so. That is something that the select board does at every town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Kabibo, any inputs or, um, specific to that question? Or could you take a minute to just, uh, give us the lay of the land for those that, um, either don't remember or have blocked it out the last time?
Um, I remember doing the same setup we did last time with you guys off to my, I don't know, my right, my left, so I had to think about it, to my left of the table. I, I, I would just encourage everybody to be succinct. This is going to go long. Um, I know we all have a lot to say, and I think it's important to get the information out there, but I would just encourage everybody to be succinct. Um, I think you guys are extremely well-prepared. I feel well-prepared after listening to you, so, um. I'm not really, is anybody any specific questions about process?
Are you putting time limits on, uh, discussion comments?
I am not. Um, I think that there are ways of controlling that without doing that, and I think that it, it, it makes people feel that. They can't be heard, um, so I'm not going to do that. Um, and I, I know the ones that are going to be contentious, so. Prepared to keep those in hand.
Okay, um, I actually, I apologize, I'm gonna, I thought we were just about done, and I probably need five more minutes of your time. Because I wrote a note and I rose, uh, breezed right by it. So, I just wanna have, um, we're gonna back up a little bit. So, we had, um. I think several articles, I think four of them where we did not have unanimous votes. Um, we also voted in our policies and procedures in terms of, um, minority reports. And, uh, Deirdre, I do not have, um, what I would feel would be an accurate tally. I would definitely have to go on my notes. Do you happen to have vote tallies on eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-six?
I do. What were the numbers again? Eighteen?
Yeah, eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-six. I took those from meeting minutes. Um, as to those that were, um, not unanimous.
Okay.
Um, now, my real question is, did any of those have more than three dissenting? And I know there was at least one because. That really is the follow-on question as to whether we had a very brief discussion about it during our meeting as to whether we needed to change. Assignment of the article from a person that just, it was in the dissent to a person that was into the, uh, in the majority, in the affirm. And I can't remember which article that was, so I wanted.
It was one of Doug's, um.
Twenty-two?
Right. He, he, he voted to dismiss it, and he's assigned that article. I believe that's what it was.
I think it was, I think it was the other way around. I think he voted to, and that's really my question. We have to know. So, before we, maybe you can look that up. I wanna, while you're looking that up, we're gonna have a little discussion as to. How the committee feels about having somebody that is in the minority presenting the article. Um, can I have your comments on that?
I, I honestly think since it's just, it's a dismissal article, recommend dismissal. It's a little easier than a recommended affirmative for the person. Is opposed to it, because he'll just be making the motion to dismiss. He won't be arguing for it. Um, he won't be arguing against it. He'll just be relaying our message that we want to dismiss it. Then if the.
Right, but, but in, in the particular issue or the particular instance that I'm thinking of, um, Craig. We had a member assigned to an article that it may not have been to, I don't think it makes a difference whether it's dismissed or, or not. But we had somebody assigned to the article that was in the minority. So, in other words. I, I don't think there's any issue. I personally don't think there's any issue with any of us objectively describing, uh, an article. Some, somebody could feel that that person could sandbag it so that the, the minority opinion. Uh, or the dissenting opinion is, you know, better described. I, I don't have that concern.
No, and I agree. I don't, I just.
Uh, but that's just my own opinion.
No, I, I agree with you on that position, but I'm saying in this case, it's even, it's even less of a concern because Doug is going to honestly just say, I move the article be dismissed. Even though he's in favor of it. If you could argue that potentially there'd be sandbagging, not with Doug, not in that article, I don't believe. But the case could exist where they could do a half-hearted sales on it if they're opposed to it, and it was, uh, affirmative. But in this case, it's gonna be quite honestly just a, I move to dismiss. They're dismissed fails. He's in the perfect position to advocate for it.
Um, I, again, I apologize for bringing this up so late in the, uh, process. Anybody else have any comments, uh, whether they? You know?
I, they wanna give. Uh, again, as a newbie here, I don't know what it's, how it is, like, someone makes, uh. The FinCom will make a motion to dismiss, and then obviously there's gonna be people getting up there to support. At, at no time does the FinCom have to, um, uh, react to those, uh, comments why people are supporting it. Or after, uh, the FinCom votes, uh, states publicly to dismiss something, that's the end of our input into the town meeting. Regarding the article?
Well, uh, actually, I, I believe that the answer to that is. Um, we have the opportunity to lead the discussion first when, uh, I think the, again, our practices and policies and procedures. Is that the moderator will defer to us to start the discussion. Um, our policy procedure also says that, um, we could have a minority report if there's more, there's equal or more, uh, three or more equal. Um, to, um, dissenting, and then if not, then the finance committee members can also speak. Um, as a member of the voting, you know, public, um, on their own. So, I, I think the answer is, it's up to the moderator after, once she defers to the finance committee to open the discussion. It's then up to the moderator to decide what, just like any chair, you know, decides who the question goes to. Um, if she defers to the finance committee, she, she can. Um, if she doesn't, then, you know, somebody else may answer questions or address. Uh, the voting public's comments.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so I have article number eighteen, which is the, uh, school computer lease. Which is assigned to Jim, I believe, and he voted nay. The motion carried, uh, a five-to-three vote. On, um, April seventh.
Okay.
Is that what you were looking for, Pete?
Yeah, that, and for the other three articles as well.
What were the other three?
Uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-six.
So, twenty-two, um.
Twenty-two is Doug.
So Doug's assigned to it, and he voted in favor of it, but the committee overall voted to dismiss it. So, and twenty-three.
Doug.
So Joyce was nay, and Jim Borkman, and Doug has that article, so I don't think there's a problem with that. So, it was a six or two.
Okay.
Or.
Uh, and Doug, and Doug was in the majority. He was a yea.
He was a yea, um, and what's.
And then twenty, twenty-six.
Oh, that sale of land, so that is, uh, Craig's, he voted in favor of it, um.
Okay.
So, I, and it was a five-to-three vote, um. I think that answers your question.
Okay, so five to three, okay. Um, Deirdre, real quick, were, did any of, any more of those? Three, excuse me, four articles, did any more of those have, uh, three or more dissenting votes? And while you look that up, I'm just gonna have another, uh, quick question for the committee. Um, so. Having had the discussion that we just had about whether we have concerns about somebody, I don't, I'm not compelled. To make any changes to article assignments, um, and if. If you agree with that, then we can just press on. If somebody else, uh, doesn't agree with that, then, you know, speak now or forever hold your peace. At least, uh, until, you know, after Saturday.
Okay, so, um, article number twenty-six, it, they, uh, it was three dissenting.
Okay, yeah.
Twenty.
So my question is gonna be for each, each of those articles that was not unanimous. Is there, uh, any, somebody that voted in the minority? Will they be doing a minority report and will, do they want it read at springtown meeting? That's really the, where we're, you know, that's the second half of my question is, will there be a minority report and do we need to include it? So, article twenty-six, if you.
Eighteen, eighteen was, uh. The school bus lease.
Yeah.
It was five to three. Both of them were five to three, eighteen and.
Okay.
Um, I'm just. Yeah.
So I, I have eighteen, but no, I was not feeling any.
You, you will not present a, when, it, it doesn't have to be you, Jim. That's the other thing. Anybody that voted, no. Um, we can, uh, we certainly can, you know, that's our policy and our procedures. We'll, we'll follow the policy procedure. So, we will afford the opportunity for the dissenting, uh, group to do a minority report. Anybody else on article eighteen, uh, that voted no, want the opportunity to present, uh, a differing opinion during discussion? Okay, none heard? Anybody on article twenty-six, uh, would like to present a, uh. Uh, minority report? Okay, none heard. Thank you. I just feel like we have to do that, right? That's what our procedure says. Is, uh, is, is the, uh, the way to, to address, uh, anything with any articles or votes with, uh. More than three, um, dissenting, so that's why I felt compelled to do it. Should have done it before now. Uh, thank you very much, and. Sorry, go ahead, Mister McCaffrey.
Um, just to have a couple of comments. Um, just so you understand, from the select board's point of view, we have an article where there is not unan- unanimous consent. Uh, a proponent, someone in the majority, will we make any comments? Um, simply because I think that's good practice. Um, and I don't wanna. Um, indicate what the current moderator would do, but, uh, if I was the moderator. I would not feel compelled to recognize a FinCom member just because the FinCom member has a minority report.
Okay, well. I don't think the, uh, the, the moderator is listening, and she's aware that there are.
I am listening.
It's not unanimous. And she can deal with that.
On her own, she can deal with it. Right, thank you.
Yeah.
And it might be worth revisiting after town meeting, the minority report, to see if it's included as a subparagra- or a sub-sentence in our. In our written recommendation, and that might be something we discuss further, because they were brand new with these. We just wrote, we just, we just approved the, the, uh, the, the by, the, uh, guidelines, so we can, uh. Now amend them for the first time.
Yeah, and they, you know, go ahead, go ahead, Donna.
Sorry, I did walk out of the room for a moment. Was there a decision to have a minority opinion read?
No, no.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So, you know, I, I understand what Mister McCaffrey said, but there's actually a way that, that we could ensure. That the minority opinion would be, would be read during the FinCom's discussion, and that is just to include it in the FinCom's discussion. Um, it doesn't have to be attributed to anybody. It could just be attributed to the minority. Um, and could be written and provided to the person assigned, but we're not, we're not there. We're not gonna need to do that, um, based on. The inputs that we just received on articles eighteen and twenty-six. So, I agree with Craig. We, we oughta kinda. Follow the mechanics of this in the event, in future, uh, town meetings, in the event that there would be an issue. And, and maybe address that in our policies and procedures. So, so I think we're all set, um, Donna, and then.
With Mister McCaffrey's call on this in terms of that minority report as a separate.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Okay.
The only thing I'd like to point out, Pete, and I'm, I'm just saying this, is that, um, Joyce was, um. A dissenting vote on both of those articles, and she's not here tonight. Okay, just as a heads up.
Okay, well, um, I don't think, I, I will reach out to Joyce. And, uh, make sure that she knows that if, if she wants to comment on it, that the other. Persons that dissented potentially, because Doug is also not here, um, that we have, we have polled the attendees. Um, and nobody has, um, stepped forward with the intent to include or provide minority reports. Nor have we really worked out the mechanics of how we would include those. Um, and I will advise her that if she wants to make comments, she's certainly free to do so as part of the, um, the voting public, and believe it or that. But that would be my intent unless I'm advised between now and then, otherwise.
Point of order, Mister Chair, if I might, Kathy McGinnis.
You may.
There was the, uh, town selling a piece of landlocked land, and, um. I may be in a position to present a minority report on that, and was it too late for me to mention that? Did I? Both that I wasn't going to do that or something?
That's all right.
We, we, you're right, that's article twenty-sixth. That's one of the ones that we asked about, and nobody spoke up. So, if, if it's one that, uh, that you feel like you want to, uh, present a, a minority report. You may do so. How we, how we incorporate it into the town meeting, um, is another discussion to be had.
I just, I just wanna say. Go ahead.
I would advise you, if you want it, um, if you want a minority report, you start drafting it, and by Saturday, we, uh. We'll come up with a way to, uh, to, to address it, you know, and I'm not sure that it would be included in comments or discussion. Um, I don't know how we would do that, or if it would be included in discussion, but it certainly wouldn't be done unless we had it written. By somebody who's dissenting.
Mister Chair, I already have it written, and I'm just proposing that this, this be tabled or dismissed till a future date, because. There seems to be a lot of, uh, you know, I haven't seen an assessed value. I don't know who's buying it, and for what purpose this gentleman wants to. Pursue this. Is it to allow him to build more properties? I think there's more investigation that needs to be done, and that's what I'm merely asking. Thank you.
Okay, um, just to be clear, you're not asking for us to table the article. You're just asking us to table the discussion as to how it would be. Uh, the minority report would be handled?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the questions.
I think wrong, but I think Kathy's minority report was going to be the town meeting table, the discussion of this, you know, basically voted dismissed. Know of future town meeting, so.
Yeah, that's what I want. I want clarification on what she's asking to be tabled and when.
I believe that's
Thank you.
Kathy, you, you're, you're, you're saying that your minority report would be a recommendation to table the article, article twenty-sixth?
Is it tabled or dismissed? I don't know the legalese, Mr. Chair, but I think it should be, it's a worthy item for discussion at a future date. But I am not convinced of all the evidence yet that would, it's a good idea to purchase this.
It, just to be clear, it's to sell it. It's not for purchase.
To sell it, I'm sorry, yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, I understand what you're
Chairman, it may not be helpful. At a town meeting, certainly a motion to dismiss is in order. A motion to table is also in order. They have the effect, the same thing. But if someone raises a motion to table the article, then it is up to, and if there's a second, then, then it has to be acted upon by the town meeting. This is irrespective of minority report or anything else.
And just to be clear, there's no discussion on a table, correct? It's immediately to revoke?
That I'd have to look up.
I'm looking it up.
Yeah.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I believe
Go ahead.
On this would be since we do have a majority motion to approve, the person would make the majority motion, but out of courtesy, since there were three dissenting votes, if Kathy has something that would be read, I would envision it being something like the finance committee voted to approve this article for these reasons, make the motion that we approve it. So the motion's made to approve it, the person speaks to the reasons we voted to approve it and says, just to inform the town meeting, three of our members dissented with this motion to approve. The reasons are as follows, and then reads Kathy's prepared statement. But the motion to, to approve is the motion that's made and that is acted on. But then the minority report is noted as part of the motion that is made. And we really need to clarify this in our handbook, but I think that's the direction we'd be going with it. Because you can only have one motion on the table.
And that's, and I agree that, that when article twenty-six, Jody, when Jody reads her discussion, she's the first one that's recognized by the moderator. That is documented as part of practice and procedure. She makes her comments, she, she can go into detail as to what the vote was. And because our practice and policies and procedures say that a, a minority report can be included, that that's where to do it. Because I also just heard Donna say that she doesn't necessarily have to recognize, nor have we pre-coordinated this and worked out all of the mechanics of a minority report. But our, our procedures say that we would allow it as the finance committee. So the way to do that is just as you described, Craig, that the minority report be drafted and it be included, get provided to Jody so that she can include it in the finance committee's discussion. And it, and it necess, doesn't necessarily have to say a motion to table because it, what it should be is a discussion of the rationale for the finance committee's vote, one, you know, whether you're for it or against it. And if there's a motion to be made from, from, if there's a motion to table or dismiss, that needs to be done from the floor of the, of the town meeting, not from the finance committee. Because the finance committee voted to affirm this.
Right, and that motion can only be made after the article is, the motion to approve is voted down. Because you can only have one active motion at a time.
Understand.
Mr. McCaffrey.
So
Well, yeah, I guess what I was just trying to say is, a motion to table is, is a motion. If it's simply, we think we should defer, if the argument is the town meeting should defer action, then, then the article gets voted down and then the same thing is achieved, basically.
Right.
So, so the way I see this playing out, and that's, again, that's if there is a, if there's a desire by anybody, the dissenting people on the finance committee or someone in the voting public, they can do that when there are, when there are motions, when, when there is the ability to put a motion out there. However, the motion will be made immediately during the presentation of the article by the finance committee. So we can, I don't think that the comments in the minority report should include, I don't think it's appropriate to include any type of motion to dismiss or table. If the vote fails, then there's certainly an opportunity to do that. Or, and then, you know, the, at that point, it's the moderator's job and responsibility and discretion to deal with it. But the way I see this happening is Kathy, please provide your inputs to Jody so that she can just essentially include your inputs for the minority report in her, her discussion comments. And they should address, they should address the rationale for the vote of the dissenting parties. Go ahead, Jody.
It seems to me to make a little more sense that, you know, the motion is made and then the moderator opens it for discussion. The finance committee member, which would be me in this case, who's in charge of leading the discussion, I would lead it off and then perhaps make, and then mention that there is a minority report as well, or a minority statement from dissenting members of the finance committee. And then another member would be able to present that. That was kind of more how it was written in our manual rather than having, you know, in this case, for instance, I, it would seem that I would be presenting both sides of the argument, which seems a little bit awkward versus
Well, I don't, I don't have, I don't have an issue with either way. But again, when you, when the floor is given to you, you will already have made a motion. And so because only one motion can be heard at a time and your initial motion is to recommend approval, then again, it behooves the dissenting entities to, whether they provide you comments and you read it, or whether it's up to Donna, whether or not she defers to another person. And, and so again, we're back to, it's, it's Donna's discretion unless, Jody, unless you read the comments that the finance committee dissent, might, you know, dissenting persons provide to you, and we, again, you have the floor at that point. It's up to Donna whether she recognizes anybody else.
Can I ask a question to might clarify all this pretty simply? Donna, if, if we did have, in this case, we do have one minority report, would you as moderator allow a second FinCom person not to make a motion, but to make a comment as to why she objects to Jody's motion, speak in opposition basically to Jody's motion? Because if you would, then we don't have to roll it all into Jody's and Kathy can just go forward and say it. And, and it wouldn't be a motion to table. Kathy would say that she's opposed to this and thinks it should be tabled to a future date. We should vote no on this motion to approve because I mean, yeah, if you'll recognize Kathy, then it really makes the process go quite smoothly.
I mean, from my perspective, Kathy at that point is speaking as a member of town meeting, not as a FinCom member. I mean, I, I, so I loathe to, to recognize her sitting at the FinCom table in that regard because she's really just speaking as a member of town meeting at that point. You guys are making a recommendation as a committee, that's what's been put in front of us. So that's, that's, I think, part of the tension of what's going on here. Kathy sitting at that table, making those comments, gives it a different gravitas than a town meeting member standing at the microphone.
And I think that's the way that our
Donna, if Donna, if I could just interject, I, I don't necessarily see it that way because our policy and procedure specifies that, which we all voted on, we, we essentially agreed to, I think unanimously, that we, that the finance committee will allow a finance, excuse me, a minority report in, in any event that there are more than three dissenting persons on a vote. So we have no problem as a body allowing a minority report. And I think it's, as you said, it's up to you to allow it, you know, during comments or not. But again, Kathy would be, if it's, again, in this example, if it were Kathy, she would be representing those in the minority, which our policies and procedure, procedures say that, that we want to happen. Again, I don't care either way whether it's, the comments are provided to Jody and Jody reads them. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. It's no different than allowing somebody who voted in the minority to represent the article. We, we already had that discussion and we felt like it didn't, it didn't, wasn't a problem. I don't have any problem with Jody providing the opinion of the, the minority. I think Jody can do that just fine, just as Doug is gonna be expected to do it in article twenty-two.
I'm, 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 I need to think about this a bit, to be quite frank. I mean, this is, this is a new scenario. I think that I just need to give this some thought. I can't comment on exactly how I'm going to deal with it at the meeting at this point in time. I think I'd like to have some conversation with some prior town moderators and just get some input here. But I, I do worry about the perception. It doesn't matter what your reality might be, Pete, it's the perception that I'm more concerned about.
That's
Meeting at one-thirty, so she can do her research.
That's a hundred, a hundred percent understandable. Your rules are different than my rules in the sense that, or at least your responsibility. I'm, I'm responsible to make sure that we follow our policies and procedures. And I a hundred percent agree that that is either here nor there for you. You have a different charge and I know that you'll fulfill it. So Kathy, could you kindly send me the minority report? And I asked before you do that, that you check with the other dissenting members that you've captured their thoughts or at least coordinated with them on what's being presented. Because I don't think that we should have three minority reports. If there's, if there's one minority report, it should capture the, the feelings of the three of you in a, in a consensus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I will. I would just like to ask the moderator perhaps and, and to speak with perhaps Craig Schultz because there was a time a few years ago when two members of the FinCom spoke as a, with a minority report and it was allowed and everything. And I can refresh Craig's memory, although I know he knows what I'm talking about. So thank you.
Years ago, and there were three of us, I believe, but I believe that's right. We, we did read a minority report from the table.
And who was the moderator then? I was curious. We can look it up in the records. Thank you.
Probably Jim.
I believe it was Mr. McCaffrey.
Here we go.
But it was, it was a three-person, that was the model for our whole minority report paragraph. I thought we'd never need to use. Who knew?
Okay, I'm gonna close this discussion and we'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move, we adjourn.
Second.
And moving second, then we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Have a great night.